Good evening, candidates and community members. Thank you for joining this candidate forum hosted by Bike Cover City, which is an all volunteer group. My name is David Coles and I'm a steering committee member of Bike Cover City, and I will serve as moderator tonight. I'm joined behind the scenes by several Bike Cover City volunteers, including Seth Mason and Katrina Kaiser. As a reminder, we are a chapter of the LA County Bicycle Coalition, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. As such, we are prohibited from endorsing candidates, and that is not the point of this event. Instead, our goal for this forum is to hear the candidates' positions on various mobility issues, and hopefully foster some debate in the hopes that voters will be better informed of their options as a result. We are joined tonight by five of the six candidates for Culver City's two open city council seats. Kinken G., Freddie Puza, Dan O'Brien, Alex Fish, and Devin Jaeger. We also invited the other candidate Denise Renteria, who unfortunately had to drop out of the forum because of an unexpected scheduling conflict. We have some basic expectations. The discussion should be civil and respectful, and candidates should not speak longer than the time allotted. We encourage candidates to draw distinctions between themselves and other candidates. This meeting is being recorded and will be shared via our YouTube channel. We have decided to disable the chat except for the panelists so that audience members will be more focused on what the candidates are saying. As for format, each candidate will be given two minutes to make an opening statement. We will start in reverse alphabetical order. So Devin Jaeger will lead, followed by Freddie Puza, Dan O'Brien, Kinken G., and then Alex Fish. For subsequent questions, we will continue in that order with the previous question's first speaker being bumped to last. So Puza, O'Brien, G., Fish, Jaeger. If any candidate would like me to repeat a question, I'm happy to do so. And we will also paste each question in the chat after it is asked. Without further ado, let's begin with opening statements. Devin Jaeger, you are first.
Good evening, folks. My name is Devin Jaeger. As you know, I'm running for Culver City Council. I've been living in Culver City for about two years. I grew up in West LA in Rancho Park. Very familiar with with all parts of of West LA. I'm running for one specific reason. The homelessness situation in Culver City has gotten really out of hand. And I had kind of mixed feelings about doing the debate tonight. You know, I'm not a big proponent of Move Culver. I know that's something that your group advocates for. But then I thought about it some more and I realized bicyclists are probably some of the most impacted people by the homelessness issues. You know, you guys are riding around every day. Your bikes are getting stolen, I'm sure. So I thought, you know what, it'd be worth coming out, seeing your guys' views on things and letting my voice be heard. Because yeah, I'm sure, well, we might disagree on some things like bus lanes. I'm sure we can agree on a lot of things, like, you know, we need to really deal with the homeless. So your bike stop getting stolen. So you're not pestered when you're trying to ride down the block. So you feel safe. So you can actually use those buses that those lanes were built for. And so you can enjoy our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Freddie Puza is next.
Yeah, thank you, David, Katrina, and Seth, and Bike Cover City for hosting this candidate's forum. My name is Freddie Puza. I moved to Culver City for its location. It's four miles from where I work. The restaurants and businesses, the creative economy, and most of all, the people. We're really fortunate to live in a city where we can get so involved at the level. I'm particularly proud of the collaborative efforts I've done to get things. Like, I'm a member of Protect Culver City Renters, and I helped get rent control and tenant protections. Excuse me, I also helped co-organize the first and second Culver City Bike Ride and Rally. I've served, excuse me, on the Committee on Homelessness, as well as the General Plan Advisory Committee. Our city is facing a housing crisis and a climate change crisis. So it's important to acknowledge the intersectionality of all these issues and prioritize short and long-term solutions that will achieve a sustainable and equitable future now. And all of these issues and solutions do begin locally. I understand the importance and urgency of mobility issues. I live in Fox Hills, and we face a lot of issues when it comes to traffic calming, I mean, cutting down on cut through traffic. Sadly, there was a death recently where someone was trying to cross the street to get to Fox Hills Park. And I know many neighborhoods are facing similar issues. I'm committed to creating more connectivity throughout the city. The transportation networks I'm trying to create will reduce greenhouse gas emissions and cut down on traffic by giving people other options than only using their cars to travel in. I don't believe in adding mobility infrastructure solely for leisure pursuits. I'll be a fierce advocate for infrastructure that people can depend on to commute. One of my most urgent priorities is to work with the Transportation Department and Culver City Public Transit to make sure routes are properly serving the residents. It will also be ensure so essential to the regional partners. So I'm ready to do this work, and I'm excited to talk about my plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan O'Brien is next.
Hi, thanks everyone for having all of us here. I came to Culver City about 22 years ago, and I've lived in Betts Park with my wife. We raise our kids here. They went through Culver City schools, and I've been really involved my entire time here. And my kids were my inspiration. I first got involved by helping transform the playground at Betts Park, being a part of the first homelessness committee, was on the Culver City Education Foundation for a few years, Boy Scout Scoutmaster for five years, and most recently was one of the co-founders of Feed Culver, which has served over 100,000 meals, raised over a million dollars to do so for our food insecure. I want to give you a little background since we're talking to the Bike Cover City. I grew up in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, and my bike was my primary form of transportation. I would take it to the park, to my friends. I would take it to the lake. I would take it to play basketball. I had a paper route. I used my bike to, you know, remember when kids had paper routes? That's what I used it for. And before we moved to Culver City, we lived in, my wife and I rented in Hermosa Beach, and I worked in Santa Monica. I rode my bike 18 miles to my job in Santa Monica because frankly, it only took five minutes longer taking the strand rather than sitting in traffic. And then when we moved to Culver City and we went down to one car, I was riding my bike to and from Santa Monica to Culver City. So I know the value of it. And I know the danger of it. On my way home one day from Santa Monica, about this time of year, it was dark. A car blew through a stop sign. I went over my handlebars, tore both ligaments in my wrists, and stopped riding my bike for a while. So I know how important it is to protect the lanes and utilize, you know, public transportation methods. I've got a lot of great ideas, and I can't wait to share them with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Kinken G.
Thank you. Okay, I've unmuted myself. My name is Kinken G., and I've been a Culver City resident for 31 years, going on 32 next month. The most enjoyable bike rides that I've experienced have been on the Bayona Creek Bike Path, where the designated bike lanes allow us to study both the flora and the fauna at a luxurious pace. The three hazards that a biker faces are number one, speeding cards on your left; number two, opening car doors on your right; and three, potholes in the road. The current bike lanes that are paved on Culver Boulevard in Washington have them adjacent side by side, or they have been carved as shared lanes where they're merged into one. The problem with the current bike lanes is that the bicyclist is exposed to VOCs, volatile organic compounds, and 2.5 micron particulate matter from the natural gas-powered buses that are injurious to the lungs of the biker. To achieve zero vision with zero mortality, we need to shift to designated bike lanes on less traveled streets. For example, instead of carving out bike lanes on Overland south of Jefferson, it would be safer for the bicyclist to be riding on Kinston, which is parallel to Overland, instead of Overland. Kinston is where the community families bike anyways, so why not listen to the community? Also, we need to be working in close coalition format with the city of LA and the county so that we can carve out bike lanes that are safe and that connect without a hitch. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Alex Fish.
Thank you so much for organizing this. I really appreciate it because it's nice to be in a place and to get to talk directly to people who understand the difference between performances about the environment and actual environmental action, action on climate change. Performances about public safety and prayer to fears versus actual public safety. Because this is a group, anybody who is a utility bicyclist, who runs errands on their bicycle, who's part of your life, you've been the victim of violence. I know that because I've been the victim of violence. And in our city, if you look at the statistics, most violence and certainly most deaths occur. The victims are pedestrians and cyclists. Los Angeles, Culver City, has not cared about our lives really ever. And that's got to stop because we know what we have to do. The Air Resources Board has been telling us for years that we have to reduce vehicle miles traveled per capita by 20% pretty much immediately. I used to put a year figure on it, didn't make any difference. And now it's so urgent to get those numbers down that it is immediately. Every day needs to be action towards providing safe networked options that are not driving. And it doesn't matter why you ride, whether it's because you have a disability, because you can't afford the $10,000 a year that it costs to own and maintain a car, whether it's because you care about the climate, want to deliver a world with living into your children. It doesn't matter. There are so many intersections with people who care enough or need to or forced to ride a bicycle that, you know, this is a group that understands that housing is climate action, transportation is climate action. It's all public safety. It's all one package. And I'm super excited to, because I know your questions are going to give me an opportunity to elicit that holistic view tonight, and just I really appreciate the time.
Thank you, everybody. We will now proceed to the first question. What is your assessment of the pilot Move Culver City project on Washington and Culver Boulevards? Do you support making it permanent? Do you support advancing Phases II and III on Sepulveda and Jefferson? Freddie Puza will begin.
Great, thanks. And how much time do we get?
Oh, sorry, three minutes each.
Okay, great. Yeah, so as I said, my campaign's all about connectivity between people, also connectivity throughout the city. So I imagine Culver City where, you know, that we can get around an alternative modes of transportation to address our sustainability goals and to address climate change, which, you know, everyone's talking about it. Particularly, young people are ringing the bell about climate change. Getting to Move Culver City, it's a pilot program. So it's very exciting to think about what, you know, a safe, connected, complete streets would look like. You know, it's in a short distance. And it's a pilot program. So there, you know, there's obviously room for improvement, to fix any kinks and to any issues. I'd love to see it be extended. Right now, it ends at Duquesne, so I'd love to see it into the next phase and go to Alenda. That would connect the bike path all the way from the Art District and then all the way to the new Culver City Bike Path that will take you all the way to the beach. That's so exciting. That will give us better results and better data to make decisions about that and to protect our cyclists and people moving to and from. I'm really also, I love the micro mobility features of it. In particular, I really like the all-electric bus, the circulator. So that will, I think, will really revolutionize how people get around in Culver City. I'd love to see that extended all the way to where I live in Fox Hills. Also get to Culver West and Blair Hills, all places that sometimes feel underrepresented in the city. It's a great opportunity to, you know, again, to share rides. And so, yeah, so overall, I think that, you know, there's room for improvements, there's room for adjustments. But I would love to see Move Culver City move forward. It's a shining example of mobility. That's not just for leisure purposes, which I was talking about, you know, adding a bike lane here or two is, you know, for leisurely, try to get around town. But I'm talking about mobility infrastructure that's actually for commuting. And so that's also brings up equity issues as well. So making sure that people who can't have a car or choose not to have a car have access to safe ways to get to and from wherever they're going. And I think that I will end there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dan O'Brien. You are muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right. So Move Culver City downtown, I completely understand why we did it. The pass-through traffic that went through was clogging the streets. I do remember before the pandemic and before Move, when traffic was horrible down there. And, you know, it was backed up all the way down to Braddock. We needed to find a solution for us, for the city. I part, there's parts that I like, and there's parts of it that I think that we can improve. I think that we need to make the bike lanes a permanent fixture. I would love to remove the ugly plastic identifiers that we see, like the plastic billiards and the plastic sticks that stand up. But I think that the bus lane needs to be peak hour only. We don't have the ridership, and we don't have the size of the fleet, nor are we nimble enough fleet to justify having that closed off all day long, 24/7. Someday, I want us to move towards a fleet of buses that are smaller and can go into our neighborhoods and be on call. I know that the LA Department of Transportation is working on that themselves, like an Uber or a Lyft. So they come to our homes, make it more convenient for us, and increase ridership. I would like to have those options on all of our major arteries. I do think that the bike lane, I've really taken a lot of time. I ride my bike downtown and get a feel of it and feel the dangers of how it works and how it doesn't work. The Duquesne situation where the bike lane ends going west is problematic. But I could put some scramble intersections in the downtown area at Main Street in Culver and at Duquesne in Culver so that a bike doesn't have to stop twice to get to, you know, a direction where it wants to go. It could just go across all lanes. I also think that Washington might be a better route at the Y than Culver to travel westbound. There's less cars, there's less intersections, it's safer. There's less street parking, so you wouldn't be taking up, you know, space of cars where parked cars might be or where people might need to drop people off to visit our restaurants and our retail establishments or delivery trucks need to be able to do that. So that's another thing we need to correct in the Move project is providing places where people who are being dropped off as passengers have a safe place to do so. The downtown businesses are really struggling right now. It was anecdotal, they felt it, and now they're hearing it through a study they did. And I think we need to help them in that area. But I want to make a citywide network of peak hour bus lanes and expand our protected bike lanes.
Thank you. Next will be Kinken G., and I apologize for mispronouncing your name earlier. Won't happen again.
Oh, no problem. Thank you for the question. I think that, you know, one of the things that folks have an issue with the current mobility lanes is that, number one, it was put in place without a traffic study. And when you don't have a baseline study, it's hard to improve on baseline and see where the problem areas are where you can intervene and improve upon. Number two, one of the problems with the mobility lanes is that sometimes there is merging of the bus and bike lanes, and that's hazardous for the bicyclist. And you don't need me to tell you that, and you don't need to hear from me about that. But as a physician, practicing physician, it's hard for me to see the bicyclist riding next to natural gas-powered buses and having VOCs and 2.5 micron particles, you know, settling in their lungs and creating long-term problems in terms of health. I would like to see them wearing masks that filter out the 2.5 micron particles, if at all possible. So I think there needs to be general outreach in terms of health issues if we're going to continue that program. And number three, related to that, I'd like to see bike lanes that are designated bike lanes away from busy traffic so that they are traveling on less traveled streets with with fewer cars in them and better connectivity. Right now, the connectivity is a little scrambled because we're having to pick up where the city of LA left off with their bike lanes. We're often asked the question, well, the city of LA has their bike lanes ending at Adam Street. You know, how would you connect with those bike lanes? I think we should all be at the table at the same time making integrated bike lanes that are reasonable rather than being left to scramble after the city of LA has designed their bike lanes. So I think that we deserve a seat at the table with the city of LA, and then we should be able to design better and integrated bicycle lanes. So let's see if I have anything else to say about this. Yeah, I think that's all I'd like to say on this for the time being. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Fish is next.
Thank you very much. Well, the numbers are in, and let's just walk through them. As a result of Move Culver City, Culver City Bus, his ridership has increased 23%. The average weekday pedestrian volumes downtown is up 32%. The average weekday bicycle volumes downtown, up 123%. The delay to drivers in the morning eastbound is, looks like about 12 seconds. The PM delay looks like about 36 seconds. The, that's the eastbound. Westbound, for cars, the westbound delay is about 0.8 minutes, less than 48 seconds. And the PM peak hour traffic, you know, commute delay for a car driver is up 72 seconds on a 7.3-minute commute. So I hear that, and I hear great numbers. I mean, that is great success. We're giving people mobility options, and we're not inconveniencing drivers as much as it feels. I know that there are feelings here. Nobody wants something to be in the way of their car. It's a psychological thing. We all drive, many of us, you know, many of us drive. There is a psychological reaction to someone being in front of you, and that 48 seconds of delay can feel like a lifetime. I get that. But I think the numbers are important. And, you know, I think when I look at what our plans are for the Olympics regionally and what our needs are throughout the state for VMT reduction, we have to not only do, you know, perfect Move Culver City, we need to pursue Move Culver City Phases II and III, and we need to participate regionally to expand an entire region-wide network of bus rapid transit and bike lanes feeding to that. It's essential. I think it's also essential to recognize, everyone who's ridden it, everyone who actually rides their bike through there knows you can't get rid of the bus lane and keep a bike lane. You know, the bus lane and the bike lane are essential to keep together for certain segments of Move Culver City. And sacrificing one means sacrificing the other. You know, the outdoor dining has been wonderful. We expanded outdoor dining on the street and sitting on a street outdoors, not next to cars, viewing all those nasty things has probably helped our downtown businesses. It may not feel like it because business owners never like bike lanes, right? But we now know, since these candidate forums have started, that the reduction in indoor dining is a national phenomenon. So our restaurants are struggling against the nationwide phenomenon where people don't want to eat indoors. We've given them great outdoor space that people can actually get to them. And I got to taper off. We also need to, we also need to serve Fox Hills and the Jefferson Corridor with buses. Peak hour bus lanes, I question anyone's commitment to do that, if they, you know, to actually stand up to drivers during rush hour only for the bus. And finally, anybody who rides a bike knows why our air quality is bad, and it's not riding next to a bus.
Thank you. And finally, Devin Jaeger.
Let's spotlight something, something. Can you hear me now? Excellent. Yeah, I think the Move Culver program has been successful in some respects and really unsuccessful in other respects. There's big plastic billiards that are blocking, you know, big chunks of, you know, Washington Culver for the bus lane. I think even bicyclists can agree, they're big inconvenience. They're not yielding the results that to justify the inconvenience. I mean, I heard the figures Alex said. I mean, I'd have to research it, but it just doesn't, it doesn't feel right. Maybe it is some big psychological bias, but it does not feel... I mean, I think everyone here has driven down the road. They know how it feels. And, you know, data can lie. Like, data is not perfect. There's all sorts of biases that can be built into studies, and it doesn't feel, you know, as those numbers were. I do think there are places that dedicated bus lanes would make sense, you know, parts of Sepulveda, parts of Jefferson, which sounds like that's where the later phases are going to be. You know, those are major thoroughfares. Washington and Culver, especially in the downtown area, it doesn't make nearly as much sense. Now, I think keeping the bike lanes and re, how do I say? Redirecting the dollars that are being spent on these bus lanes and these complex, you know, plastic interference systems, putting that money into beautification projects and enhancing the bike lanes would be, I think, a much better use of funds. And I think that, you know, while it's great that we're promoting, you know, biking for, you know, commercial purposes, getting to and from work, you know, as an alternative, having a car. At the end of the day, you also want that journey to be beautiful. There's nothing wrong with wanting some beauty. There's nothing wrong with places being comfortable and enjoyable for all, leisure or commercial or commuting. There's nothing wrong with that. And so I think the resources that are being spent on these bus lanes should be spent on streetlights, first of all, you know, once you look at it to be light and safe as you're riding your bike. And again, more beautification projects and enhancing the bus lanes to make them pop and stand out. And so you can invite your friends and be proud of these bike lanes. And I'm sure we're going to get to it in later questions, but safety and security, all these things are for naught if your bike is missing. If you wake up in the morning, your bike's not there because it's in a chop shop, like one of the ones behind me. So we need to do a lot more to protect your bikes, you know, protect Culver, protect your bikes. If your bike's missing, you can't use these bike lanes. So I think that means working with the city attorney in Culver City, enhancing penalties for people caught stealing bikes, enhancing penalties for motorists that are, you know, engaging in road rage or assaulting bicyclists in any way. Make Culver City a hard target so people know, if you're driving in Culver City, this is not the place to run a bike up the road. So people know this is not the place to steal a bike. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we move on to the next question, I just want to remind all the candidates that the body of the question will be posted in the chat, so please reference that. And there hopefully will be a little bit of time at the end for candidates to address anything that they didn't get a chance to say or to respond to something another candidate says, that you can use that final time to, however you like. And I expect that we will have that time at the end. So the next question. "In July, a Fox Hills pedestrian was killed after getting hit by a car driver in a crosswalk. The driver was not sighted, suggesting that this tragedy occurred even while everyone involved was more or less following the rules. Do you believe that speed limits are too high in Culver City? Would you support a citywide maximum of 20 miles per hour?" Dan O'Brien, you're first. You are muted, Dan.
There we go. Can you hear me now? People violate the speed limit all the time, the posted speed limit. I see it all the time. People violate stop sign laws. I'd run about between five and six miles a day, five to six days a week. And if I didn't have my head on a swivel, I would be run over, you know, at every other intersection. Cars don't stop where they're supposed to stop. They're always seemingly in a hurry and always distracted, looking to the left when they approach an intersection, stopping at the curb instead of at the stop sign, endangering, you know, distracted pedestrians. So I, you know, not to say it's the fall of the pedestrian, but you really have to be alert to survive. And, you know, this would go for cyclists as well. So I don't, I don't think a slower speed is going to make people drive slower. We can do that measure and maybe test it and see how it works and see if it... If it, if it provides any any benefit in in safety, I I'd be open to that. But I think we need to do public works. Things to forcibly make people stop or slow down in intersections. Uh, I see it mostly in 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 our neighborhoods where. I I run and walk and and ride my bike and and cars don't stop. Where they're supposed to stop. I'd like to put raised sidewalks, you know, it it's an expensive venture, but I'd like to put them. Start, starting in our our school zones. So that so so our kids can walk safely and and a lot of the neighbors can walk sa- safely in those areas. If the if this crosswalk is raised, the the car will be more more likely to stop before they get to it. You know, they don't want to blow out their suspension when they go, when they go to that thing. I think, um. Yeah, the the decrease in the speed limit, let's test it. I I'm open to that, but but we need to measure it. So let's get a baseline and then try it. See if it affects, uh, you know, fatalities and injuries and and if it if it does in a positive way, let's move with it. I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you. Ken Ken G is next.
Okay, thank you for the question. Um, I went to the memorial of that individual. Uh, who unfortunately was hit by a vehicle. On Fourth of July and then passed away on the seventh of July. And it's a real tragedy because. Apparently, from what I hear through the grapevine, uh, there were traffic studies done of that intersection. However, they were never implemented. And number two, the Fox Hills residents that I met that day to told me that the population of Fox Hills has increased. And so has the traffic concomitantly. However. There's been no traffic signal at that intersection that sorely needed one. And that was one of the things that they attributed. Uh, to the tragedy at that intersection. And number three, basically, um, you know, there, we have more people coming to town. And subsequently, uh, traffic has increased concomitantly. Um, so we do need traffic signals. The traditional traffic signals at certain intersections that are heavily trafficked, such as that one in Fox Hills. And the one that we've been fighting for, uh, on the crest, that is at the intersection of Ranch, Kelmore and Overland. Uh, and instead we get a pedestrian park, uh, in with with mallards marking, demarketing the space. And recently I saw a little Mini Cooper just was right through the intersection of that pedestrian park. And if. Anybody had been in that park sitting there or. If they had pitched a tent there, they would have been run over for sure. So I think we, if traffic studies have been. Done already, we need to implement those traffic studies and provide those intersections, dangerous intersections where we've had fatalities. Those intersections need traffic signals placed there. And number two, uh, with that, with that particular intersection of Kelmore Ranch and Overland. I've seen pedestrians crossing the street at night, um, after dark, and they're literally honked. By the motorists because they weren't crossing the intersection fast enough for the motorists' convenience. So that's got to stop. And the way we can stop that is by. Putting a traffic light there. And and the reason for the importance of traffic light at that particular. Junction is that it's also a block away from Elwin Cone School. And we we used to have. A crossing guard at an intersection, uh, crossing Overland. If you come out of ranch, we no longer have a crossing guard there. Um, and so basically still has. School has started and the kids need help and so do the adults. Um, thank you so much.
Thank you. Alex Fish is next.
Thank you very much. Um, yeah, speed kills. Right? It's, um, last year nationwide, or I guess twenty twenty, we had over six thousand five hundred pedestrian deaths. That's up over two thousand in a decade. And we all, we all know that everyone on this call knows that if you're hit by a car. As a pedestrian that's driving sixteen miles an hour, you have a ten percent chance of dying. If you're hit by a car that's going. Thirty miles an hour, you have a fifty percent chance of dying. And the latest, um, research that I've seen kind of critiquing those studies. Uh, suggests that that sort of over overestimates your, the survivability of those impacts. And I can tell you, getting hit by a car is is not, not cool. It's not, it's it's awful and it's inevitable. When streets are not designed for anything other than automobility, which is our baseline status, status. The traffic study is that drivers have ruled our streets for a century. Uh, ever since we gave up on public transportation and the results are forty thousand dead Americans per year from impact. And another probably hundred to a hundred and ten thousand from tailpipe emissions, uh, tire dust and brake dust and road dust. That's a choice we've made and we need to reevaluate it for people's safety, for life. Um, and to encourage people because there's so many people who want to to walk or ride or take the bus, but it's not safe. Um, or the bus isn't fast enough or the headways aren't good enough. So, you know, I I'm talking about a paradigm shift and I can understand why it's. Why it's, you know, um, a challenging way to campaign, but I'm being honest about what we need to do. To protect life and to protect our civilization, because every little bit of greenhouse gases that we don't emit here. Or, you know, at our tiny level or elsewhere, is a little bit of more runway for civilization to work this out. And absolutely, we are leading in Culver City with what we're doing. So it's not just Culver City. We're making a difference regionally and statewide. I presented on Move Culver City, for example, you know, all over internationally, um, on my own dime. Um, to your question, you know, there's the expression twenty is plenty and certainly in neighborhoods, I I don't need, again, I don't need a traffic study. That's enough and that can be the law. And yes, people will violate it because that's another example of public safety and enforcement and our choices there because, yeah, everyone speeds. And we allow that for some reason. Um, but we need to, you know, to that point, we don't want police pulling over every single person who's speeding. Uh, because it is literally, you know, over ninety percent of drivers. Um, we need to incorporate design. Move Culver City is one such design. If Move Culver City had been in place one year earlier. I can think of one accident, one one crash, I'm sorry, where someone drove their car, um, too fast and died. That that and and did, I mean, that wouldn't happen with move Culver City and that's that's blood. On all of our hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Devin Jaeger is next.
Yeah, it's it's tragic. And any loss of life is really, um. You know, it's horrible. And especially when that occurs. When all the systems function as they were, you know, supposed to. So if people were going the right speed. They were obeying the laws of the road. They were following the directions, which, you know, from from what I've read, it seems to be, you know, the case. I apologize if that wasn't the case, but it seems to be the case. So what does that mean? Who does, who who does it fall on? Falls on the people who plan those systems. Like, of course, accidents happen, but if this is something that could have been predicted. And it was still allowed to occur because it's a dangerous intersection. That falls on city leaders. City leaders need to do better to make sure things like this don't happen. Whether that means more traffic signals, better crosswalks, that better controls on speed. If people are losing their life, when all the rules are being followed, that means there's a fundamental problem in the rules. I do think that there's areas where the speed limit should be reduced. I do think there's areas where there should be more crosswalks. I'm not an expert on these on on this issue, but certainly like the the fatalities or near fatalities I know about of pedestrians throughout LA County. Oftentimes, it's folks crossing in the middle of the road, like on Wilshire or Westwood Boulevard or other major thoroughfares. Uh, and often it's because. Even someone like me, I'll cross in the middle of the road sometimes. We don't want to walk to the next corner. And, you know, whether it's laziness or, you know, it's, you know, you've got a bit of a limp and you don't want to, you know. Trek all the way to the next corner. There should be more crosswalks in the mid, in the middle of major thoroughfares. And if that creates an inconvenience, like the forty seconds of, you know, allegedly from the data of adding the bus lanes. I think that's a compromise that makes sense. You know, we're talking about adding a layer of of safety and security. For, you know, folks that are, that just want to cross the street. And I think that's that, those kinds of compromises make sense. I don't know why my name keeps repeating on there. Maybe some people use my link. Anyway, uh, I think we need more crosswalks throughout the city, throughout the entire county. Um, we need reduced speeds in dangerous areas. We need, we need very more clear traffic signals. You know, one of the things with moving, I think it's attached to Move Culver City. Is these complex lights, you know, these lights with with. All sorts of figurines doing this or that. The bus has to stop, but the cars need to can keep going or it's very confusing. You know, when are there going to be fatalities from people that are just confused? You know, I've. I've I've accidentally driven the bus line, turning into the parking lot at the Culver steps. It's confusing. You don't know who's supposed to go, who's not supposed to go. What's gonna happen when someone's incorrectly in the bus lane? And they're going straight and someone turns right ahead of them to get into the parking lot. There's, there's gonna be more fatalities. It's horrible, but it's gonna be better designed. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Freddie Puzo.
Yeah, like I said, I live in Culver, are in Fox Hills, um, and the situation really, uh, hurt the community. Um, the thing is that what happened was it's on, the street is on the a curve. Um, so there's a lot of blind spots. They were going fast. A woman actually was in a crosswalk. Um, and so. You know, not only is increasing mobility infrastructure going to align with our housing sustainability goals, but it's also about. Um, you know, making sure about safety. Um, one of the things about the street also that 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 happened on is a wide road. Um, and so when people see that, it's like optical illusions, they're they're barely in down that because it looks like a highway. So, um, I think one of the many things that we could do would be, um, reducing the speed limit, um, to twenty miles per hour. Um, it is aspirational goal. Um, we have to see about all that goes into that. Um, but I definitely think we need to be looking into that because that is the number one thing is slowing down traffic. Um, especially in a residential town, like mostly residential town like Culver City. Um, as far as, uh, stop. Uh, lights, there's very specific laws about that and where they can go, um, and what they can be doing. Um, so just a fly about that. And then, um, so what happened is, um, I went to a meeting about the Fox Hills, uh, incident. Um, we've been actually talking about this for a long time. Um, and I think I just bring up this experience because I know it's happening in different. These conversations are happening in different neighborhoods. Um, but there's been this plan for a while. We're supposed to get these traffic calming measures. Um, in Fox Hills, um, it's a matter of funding. Um, and, uh, so there's other things that we could do. There's roundabouts in addition to lowering the speed limit. Um, it's increasing the bike lanes protected, uh, class four bike lanes. Um, there are narrower car lanes, which I already described. So it's actually building these complete and safe streets, much like. Um, the likes of Move Culver City, but all around, um, in different fashions, um, is the way to really protect people. Um, this is a public safety issue. It's a community safety issue for sure. Uh, I also, just going back to the funding issue, um, it's a lot like, there's a lot of seed money or initial money to do the plans. But to actually fulfill those, um, you know, we need, uh, to alleviate some of our funding and our budget. To make sure that people can write grants to get these because, uh, this project that, um, was presented to Fox Hills, um, great plan. Um, but at the end of it, they just don't have the funding. Um, so we need to make sure where is that money going to come from? And I do believe that our our budget really reflects our values. Um, and so we need to make sure that we have staff members. And directing staff to make sure that they're, um, increasing the opportunities to get more grants, um, to support that. Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to the next question. Few people would argue that the situation on Main Street is working well with the street pedestrianized on Tuesdays and weekends. While being open to car traffic the rest of the week. The street has lacked activization and the local businesses have clearly not seen the conditions as conducive to investing in the extra street space. What is your vision for Main Street and for downtown Culver City more broadly? Ken Ken G will be first and everybody has three minutes.
It's, it's difficult to answer a question like this when we're a city that was, uh, built, um, in a car-centric fashion. But I I think that, um. If we are to deploy the latest, um, in traffic engineering, uh, we might be able to work out. Something, um, after the baseline traffic studies have been done. Two years ago, there was an article in the LA Times that looked at. What would happen if. On the busy, some of the busy streets in West LA, you implemented a system of. Toll fees, uh, for cut through traffic. And that study showed that, uh, yes, if you were to deploy a toll system. Uh, you can reduce traffic. Um, and the traffic that does, um, get through the city. Is a more, is is traveling at an efficient speed. Um, and pivoting back to the last question, I would also favor a twenty mile per hour, uh, maximum. Uh, reduced speed, uh, within the city. I I think that, um, harkling back to one of the previous questions. Um, I, I think we should also, um, recognize the fact that, uh, buses, if you look at, um, buses currently. Uh, running, they're pretty much half full most of the time and they're not used to their maximal efficiency. So I think, um. We need to be looking at. Electric shuttles, um, that are a little bit more efficient and more, um. Uh, environmentally sustainable to carry us from point A to point B. Um, so I think that we we already have these parking. Structures at the periphery of town. So if people have a way to, uh. Park their automobiles at these parking structures and use, uh, electric shuttles to get through town. Um, or a, uh, use a, uh, toll-like system, the way it was, uh, used in West LA. Um, I think we might be looking at a more efficient system and I think we can also. Support our businesses, um, because people do have a way to get around town in a more efficient. Uh, fashion and we won't be dealing with so much air pollution at the same time. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Fish is next.
I appreciate this question very much because it highlights something that, uh, is hard to get to in a constructive way, but, um. This is an example, that decision to to go with ballards there was an example of an effort I made. Reflective of my decision-making process, which is I was trying to balance all of the interests in the city. Um, to create something that would work well and respected, you know, lots of different viewpoints. And the reward for that. Was that Hackman Capital Partners contributed two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in cash and in-kind services. To something called the Alliance to, you know, help two of my, two other people running in this race, um, to unseat me. That entity then gave sixteen thousand dollars to the organization that tried to recall me and a thousand dollars. To a conspiracy theory website with seventy-two Facebook followers. So. You know, the clear message there that, you know, some people want to run this town, uh, with their money. Um, and I am unbought and unbossed. And that includes from you guys, right? I disappointed a lot of friends when I said that we should, uh, use Main Street. On the weekends and and and, uh, install ballards for flexibility. Um, what's been disappointing about that is that I think what we've seen is a capital strike. I think we've seen the businesses upset about, um. Move Culver City, not understanding or not wanting to face the reality of the business climate. And that it's, uh, difficult for restaurants without outdoor space right now. And so they're sort of punishing. They seem to be. I'm not gonna assume that, but no one except one, one place has really programmed that. And citizen volunteers like yourselves who've gone to enjoy the new outdoor space. So. Um, I actually stand by the decision because I think people will come back to the table after this election. But it only depends on the results because the ballers were clearly a tactic. Um, there is no support for them. If there's no support for the space from the business community and they're gonna rip everything out depending on this election. So I am optimistic that everyone can kind of come back and be productive instead of thinking about November eighth. Um, and we can start to run the city again instead of trying to hurt people or send attack ads or push polls on phones. Um, I'm a big enough person to get over that and work constructively and try to make that space work. Um, that said, I always said that we should study the results of Main Street. Is it actually helping traffic flow or is it just creating more danger? For the massive increase in pedestrians in our downtown area? So, you know, depending on the results of that, of that work on where the traffic is going. Um, I think it is worth considering whether it should be public space. So I'm still open-minded. I'm still optimistic. But it's really a wonderful vignette of who I am, uh, as a council member. And the high stakes of trying to really honestly reflect all of the interests instead of simply caving to the business interests in this town.
Thank you. Devin Jaeger is next.
Well, I don't, I don't agree with a lot of Alex's policies. I totally agree with that analysis just now. I think that was, I think that was spot on. Um, and that's one of the issues, you know, when you, when you weigh every single, you know, uh, special interest groups opinion on something. And then you make a decision, it's like sometimes the the sum of the parts is is not so great. And I actually like the idea of of closing Main Street down and having like a promenade kind of vibe. But it just hasn't worked. Like, it's just really disappointing.
But it just hasn't worked like it's just really disappointing. And I think Alex is right. I think there's been, there hasn't been buy-in from the the business owners. I've eaten at those nice outdoor tables at the Argentinian restaurant and it's it's nice. They're putting it everywhere. It's kind of depressing, but one little corner right here. If we're gonna do this, if we're gonna close Main Street, you know, the the benefit needs to outweigh the cost like it is inconvenient. It is, it makes it harder to get into Culver City, makes it harder for for visitors from outside Culver City to drive in and, you know, find the parking lots or I love that new parking, by the way, under the steps. That's great. But to find those other parking lots when people come in on Main and then they kind of weave around and look for the parking. They can't do that anymore. And what what might people do? Keep going down, you know, Venice and find somewhere else to go outside of Culver City. Nobody wants that. I would hope nobody wants that. So I think there need, if we are going to keep Main Street closed, there needs to be better coordination with the businesses, with performers. It should be like the promenade. There should be little street performers, you know, doing stuff there. There should be, you know, booths set up. It should be, it it should have a positive uplifting vibe where people want to come out and it's an attraction. I think that's, I think that was the goal, and that hasn't been achieved, you know, maybe give it a little bit more time and it will. But, you know, I'm seeing businesses close, you know, the Mexican restaurant across from the Argentinian one. They just closed. I ate there, you know, a month and a half, two months ago. I tried to eat there last month. It's gone. Apparently, that particular location has a lot of issues, like the business seemed to turn over in that specific storefront. But still, I think either it needs to be opened back up for good, or there needs to be a very concerted effort. Because it just doesn't, it doesn't seem justified. Like when they closed the, when they closed part of the street on, you know, the main thoroughfare to have outdoor dining, that made sense. Closing it for the bus lane doesn't seem like a like a worthwhile trade off. Thank you.
Thank you. Freddie Puzo is next.
Yeah, I think we are experiencing transformation and a revolution. You know, downtown Culver City used to be the train tracks, as Ken Ken alluded to earlier. Then it moved him to car culture, and I think we're seeing this evolution into a new usage of space usage of, you know, pedestrians and bicyclists and other micro mobility opportunities. This is so exciting. This is an opportunity to change. We are emerging from a pandemic. There's, we're never gonna go back to whatever we thought normal was. This this, there is no such thing. So as we move forward, we can kind of assess what's working and what's not. I loved activating the space. As I mentioned, I helped co-organize the first and second Pride Ride and Rally this year. We did activate the space. The local businesses were really supportive of it. It brought business to their to their restaurants and to their businesses. Most of them were super supportive of it. It was also, there was a bike ride component to it. So it really celebrated mobility. Also just celebrated, you know, the diversity of our city. We, you know, I've read stories about in Colombia and also in Brazil, where the cities have shut down the city or excuse me, shut down the Main Street in the downtown area. And at first, there was like a lot of pushback and misunderstanding, and now they're demanding it and want to expand it. We have to check in. We have to have that right balance. And so, you know, understanding where businesses are and where they are, you know, as as we, the landscape is just changing and how restaurants, people have alluded to this earlier as well. But how the restaurant business is changing, businesses are changing. We know that people buy things, cars don't. So when people come to that space and they're walking and recycling, they're gonna go to multiple places rather than just using that as a cut through, which is what it it, you know, typically is. So I just have so many high hopes for Main Street and for downtown Culver City. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Finally, Dan O'Brien.
Okay, great. I'm gonna answer the question, stay on the high road. I've met with four of the business owners down there on Main Street, Aldia, Latie, Piccolili, and, you know, unfortunately, Novasentos closed after 24 years of business. I think, okay, so so the city, the the council agreed to purchase hydraulic ballards so that we no longer have to have the K rails that are very labor intensive to be pulled in and out for weekend closures. So now that we are in January, February, we're gonna have these these ballards that raise and and deploy and and on Friday night to Sunday afternoon. The problem is, is that the streets close down and it's not programmed. I think that was addressed by a few people here. But what what the problem is, is that this was put onto them and then also told, you need to figure out how to work it out. So we haven't provided them the tools to program the place to program. I mean, we just did the the Art Walk, the Arts District did the Art Walk. That's a massive endeavor. Of course, it's a much bigger space that you're in a much bigger programming event. But to do something like that every single weekend is a lot to ask for a community. I think we should start one weekend a month. That's something that's doable as far as a programming standpoint. It gives an opportunity for a special event, close it down. It's it's special. And then if that goes great, build upon that. A couple of other issues with that downtown, especially on Main Street, is when you're coming off of Venice onto Main Street and then trying to get into downtown, there's only one lane going on the Culver. And with the pedestrians, and and it feels like there's more pedestrians. I agree. They just don't go on the Main Street. Crossing at every angle, it blocks the traffic from going left or right. And with only one lane, it it really becomes an issue and traffic backs up all the way to Venice. I know this because I stood there with the business owners and I've looked at it, and they've told me this is an issue. I think we should make a scramble intersection right there so that pedestrians can cross from all directions during a given period of time, get them through that space and give back. There's plenty of room for a curb extension on Main Street and um in Culver and giving back a right-hand turn lane. So so that way you can have, you know, both lanes of traffic that are entering the downtown off of Venice, be able to go left and right as opposed to, you know, tandem, waiting for the next one and waiting for pedestrians. So those are some ideas that I want to do with that space. Thanks.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question. Micro mobility infrastructure, such as bike lanes and pedestrian amenities, has never been a high priority in Culver City budgets, meaning the city's ambitious plans are chronically underfunded. How would you work to remedy this?
Is this me this time?
Oh, sorry. Actually, you are first, Alex Fish. Yes.
Okay, yeah, no, this Okay, I'm unmuted. Yeah, the grants, there is historic quantities of grants from the federal and state level. And there may be another chance for appropriations from the state as well. You know, those are different things, like, for example, the streetlights, where it was not a grant, that was a state appropriation. Move Culver City was a federal grant. Actually, I'm sorry, it was part of the recovery, the COVID relief for our transit agencies. If we want to access outside money to fund our mobility visions, we have to stick with the plan. And that may sound, you know, so that may bother some people, but there there are no grants from outside agencies for cities that are not invested in mitigating climate change. That is how everything is lining up from the federal to the state level. You read the newspaper and you know this, but it's so much more than you think. Like, all of these programs that have existed for a long time, infill infrastructure grant programs, finely funded for cities that want to build housing near transit in a real and equitable way with environmental justice considerations, not simply next to four-lane car sewers. You know, sustainable communities grants. You know, all of this stuff lines up for cities that are building bike lanes and bus lanes, not for cities that are turning over space, more space to cars, making pedestrians wait and generally doing nothing to reduce the vehicle miles that we travel. So, you know, I think I've got a track record that shows I not only know how to get us in sync with where the money is and with where our future is, but that I've been very successful in actually getting those funds into Culver City and on the streets. So that's my primary answer, but I think it's also significant just to, you know, to telegraph it, say something that won't be popular with everyone, but that but that I really believe it's that the general fund in good years and when we have great years with Measure RE, there ought to be, that's the real estate transfer tax that was approved thanks to 51% of voters in the last election. That sometimes brings in huge amounts from the large property transactions in our city. When we have those great windfalls, yes, we've covered the pension so far, which frees our hands for other things. But I'm also open to putting aside money for affordable housing, especially near, you know, transit and and bus lanes and bike lanes, but also to execute on our bike, on our bike mobility or pedestrian bicycle action plan, which, you know, you look at Los Angeles and they took so long to implement the one-digit percentage of their bike plan that we actually have evolved in our understanding and and see the equity gaps in that. We're 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 ready. We're grown up. We can actually execute equitable plans at this point. And I think we ought to stop planning and start providing for your safety, the ability of my kids to get to school safely and our climate future. Thank you.
Thank you. Devin Jaeger is next.
I think LA politics are assessable, so I I went and looked towards LA City Hall for for inspiration on almost any of these issues. Then just driving around the streets of LA, you know, Culver Culver City has work to do, but you know, the the streets of LA are far, far, far worse than Culver City when it comes to potholes, sidewalks, dare I say, bike lanes. I I think the focus of this question is micro. I think there's a lot the city can do with not a huge amount of money to improve the quality of life of bicyclists and make them more likely to to ride their bikes. I think we should have, you know, improved air like storage areas around downtown. And I know there's some going up like more and more, you know, bike lockup areas. But I think there should be like a large central place where people can go and park their bikes that has security, that has cameras, that's secured, so people can feel like, okay, I can go into downtown, I can put my bike here and I'm good to go. And I don't think that would cost that much money. Similarly, higher-end, well-maintained public restrooms, probably adjacent to such a facility, I think would be a very good use of resources. Now, of course, you'd have to police these restrooms and make sure they stay clean and accessible and, you know, the desirable thing, something that people can point and say, hey, this is a reason I want to come to Culver City. It's clean, it's safe, it's organized, it's beautiful. Culver City can use these things to make it an attraction for not that much money. You know, not, I don't think a massive amount of money. I think that's where the resources should go. You know, this, this is the purpose of government. Government exists to do things that require a common, a common good, things that require a communal effort. And, you know, we got to be diligent with how we spend those communal dollars and make sure that there's no, you know, money leaking out to special interests or abuse of of funds or other, you know, transgressions. The money needs to be used for simple, straightforward projects that benefit everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Freddie Puzo is next.
Yeah, one of the best ways or to increase our infrastructure is to apply for grants, which kind of talked about earlier, but, you know, we, our Public Works Department has applied for transportation and related grants for safe routes to schools. There are grants for first-to-last-mile design improvements for, you know, the Bayona Creek path. Also Move Culver City was partially granted or funded by a grant. But one of the things about the funding also is that because we're a high opportunity community, we don't get a lot of these grants. So this means that I agree with Alex, who's, you know, I think that we need to look at our, how our general fund is being used and increasing that to not only increase staff time to to work on these grants, but also to increase safety for everyone and to achieve our sustainability goals. And we have a vibrant cyclist community, so many organizations in Culver City who are active in the community. And I'm so grateful for all of the work that they've done, including by Culver City. I think that they see the vision of where we need to go. You know, again, these are intersecting issues. So as we look at our housing goals and increasing housing at all economic levels, you know, in order to achieve our sustainability goals, because we know that the UN tells us that, you know, we can mitigate a lot of the negative impacts of climate change if we build housing close to where people work and play. But then we also need the mobility infrastructure to support all of that. So seeing it like that, I see so many people who are making those connections and understanding that that's the direction, that's the future that we need to go in. And that's how we're gonna, you know, be forward-thinking and looking. You know, also just wanted to say that as we talk about all this, in no way am I saying or advocating that, you know, everyone is going to, you know, use their bike or walk or use micro mobility. But if we do reduce, you know, even five to 10%, we're not only going to dramatically reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we'll reduce traffic. We'll also be a healthier city because people will be walking and exercising, will also increase community safety. Because as we get to know one another and build community and increase our community networks, that's going to create stability in our neighborhoods. And we can also be looking out for each other and not always having to rely on outside resources for that. So I think that that is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan O'Brien is next.
Great. Am I? Yeah, you can hear me. So, yeah, the grant money. My, from from my conversations with city staff, they they're have a pretty high success rate in getting grants. And I know that, you know, with President Biden's infrastructure bill, there's a lot of opportunities there and obviously California being such a, you know, a environmentally conscious state. We have a lot of opportunities on the state level. Our big issue, and it's been touched on, is we don't have adequate staffing to execute the money that we have. I think we, in a couple of our departments, we have grant money sitting there waiting to be exercised because we don't have the staff to 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 deploy it. So, yeah, we need to budget in more staff to to address these things. Micro mobility. We need to, so, you know, if you're not gonna travel and you're you're less likely to, you know, travel in your car if you live close to where you work. So why, you know, we've got tens of thousands of jobs here in Culver City, over 100,000. Our daytime population increases, you know, astronomically because of all the employees that come in. We need to engage with our large employers to intentionally hire locally. I work from home, thanks to, you know, COVID, and I haven't had to go back. My wife works at Faragut. We, you know, we have one car. Most of our things can be taken care of. We're very privileged in that way. We need to have our businesses and incentivize them to do so, to hire locally, to intentionally hire locally. And we need to build on these large commercial properties that we have, you know, 30, 50 acres of commercial property that's 50% blacktop. We need to make new communities there, mixed use, so we need to zone them as such so that people can live, shop and play, add park space, maybe add another school if we're adding a lot, a lot more people in the Culver City, so they don't have an incentive to get in their car. These are things that we need to move forward on. I also know that there's a couple of property owners along Bayona Creek who have renderings of expanded creek access by a pedestrian bike, you know, from their properties. So these are major, these are getting people from the other side of Jefferson to the downtown area with more options on bike and on foot. So again, we need to engage with these organizations, these businesses, and, you know, pool our resources both financially and brain power to make this happen. Thanks.
Thank you. And finally, Ken Ken G.
Thank you. It is true that it appears that most of the departments of the city have been very successful in applying for grants. And and an example is that the pedestrian park that is at the intersection of Kelmo Ranch and Overland was built with the grant money that the Public Works Department successfully received from the state to the tune of $157,000. So our departments are pretty efficient at getting grant money. However, it's not what we asked for, and that's not what we wanted. Basically, what we needed was a traffic light there so that folks who are sight impaired can listen in to the audio of the intersection going on so that they can cross the street. We are still not ADA compliant after all these years, so we need to be ADA compliant for one thing. And we don't need those Mini Coopers cutting through little Um, and we don't need those Mini Coopers cutting through little, um, park and creating more havoc than we already have in that intersection. So, um, the, the second thing is that, um, uh, in, in spite of our city staff being efficient at, um, getting grants, uh, most of the human resources in most of the departments are down to eighty percent. They're not working or they're not up to par at a hundred percent. So it is possible that we need to hire more staff who can, um, write more grants and bring more money into the city. So that would be one of the things that I'd like to see done, uh, if, um, I were lucky enough to be elected to the council. Um. And, uh, thirdly, I think we really need to work with the communities in building up community voices and working from the ground up grassroots fashion. Um, if a community doesn't want a pedestrian park there, please don't put one there. Um, it obstructs traffic and, you know, in spite of everything else, we're still not ADA compliant. And the fourth and last thing is that when emergency trucks try to get through Ranch, Kelmore and Overland, they're pretty much stuck most of the time and they can't get through, they can't back out. And, you know, that's one of the streets, only one of the few streets that we have to get to into um, the top of the crest because we have a fifty-two-bed nursing home at the top of the crest, Mary Crest Manor, uh, by name. And if they can't get to the emergency calls, uh, from the crest, from the top of the crest, uh, we're, we're we're up a creek without a paddle. We do really need, uh, emergency vehicles to get through and to be able to circle around and get out. So, um, I would be, um, ten seconds. Thank you. I'd like to see, uh, folks at City Hall listening more to community voices, uh, so that there's more grassroots input. Thank you.
Thank you. For the next question, it'll be a little bit shorter. We're gonna give ninety seconds each. How do you get around? Do you ride a bicycle? Do you think that Culver City is a safe place to ride a bicycle, not just for yourself, but for the general public? Devin Jaeger, you're first.
I drive. Um, yeah, I'm a, I'm a driver. Uh, I have a BMW. I, I drive it around. I try to avoid the bus lanes. Uh, certainly avoid the bike lanes. I, I also walk. I like walking. And if, again, my core issue is homelessness. If there was less homeless people crowding the sidewalks, I'd be inclined to walk a lot more and not be burning up seven dollars a gallon, coming on eight dollar a gallon fuel. I would love to walk around my neighborhood. Um, friend of mine lives just like two blocks from me, uh, on Venice and, uh, Bentley. I'm on Tilden between Venice and Washington. And he won't even walk a block and a half to the Seven Eleven. And people say, oh, we're living in fear, but no, because two weeks ago, someone got hit in the head with a hammer right at that same intersection. You know, a few days ago, someone was stabbed in the neck in, uh, at the Taco Bell. And yesterday, there was that, that situation in, in Long Beach where, where four people got stabbed. The homelessness situation is unbelievable, completely unsustainable. Talk about environmental damage, all the junk that's been washed into the creek and into the ocean. Absolutely horrible. I would love to be able to walk around more. I'd love to bike. I love my kids in the future to be able to bike and walk and be safe and enjoy, you know, the, the the beauty that is walking around and biking around, but in the current state, it's not, it's, it's not feasible for, for me and my family.
Thank you. Freddie Puzo is next.
Um, I have been cycling for about nine years. I was trained, um, I did a, a bike ride from, uh, it's called AIDS Lifecycle. It's from San Francisco to Los Angeles and the training that it's all about safety. So I feel like I got expert training about how to be safe. But the number, like, beyond the, of course, you have to take personal responsibility when you're in the road. But to have bike lanes, um, throughout the city would increase, um, safety overall. So I think there are places where it's safe. Um, but we need to definitely increase overall connectivity through the city, and that's what I really am fighting for. Um, increase in our mobility infrastructure. I have an e-bike and I have a road bike. Um, the way now that, I also have a stationary bike, but, um, the way I use my e-bike, uh, is for commuting. My road bike is for exercise. Um, and, uh, I think that, um, oh, another thing, just I live four miles from where I work. Um, I always had a debate in my mind about how can I, you know, ride my bike to work without, you know, I wear business casual clothes or sometimes suits to work. So how can I do that while throwing in my bike? And someone challenged me to, you know, ride my e-bike because I don't sweat as much. Um, but also just to wear my business casual clothes on the bike while I get there. Um, it's been great because, um, I'm a tall person, um, and I have a bike, so I'm really high, but I feel like I'm modeling that behavior as well. And also just, you know, living, you know, living, walking the talk or riding the, you know, riding the ride, um, so to speak, um, with that. So, um, I think it's, uh, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Dan O'Brien is next.
Yeah, I use, uh, all three modes of transportation, uh, by foot, by bike and by car. Um, my trips, you know, as I mentioned, when my wife and I both, you know, got jobs that didn't require us to be driving much, we decided to get rid of a car. So, you know, by definition, we're reducing our vehicle miles traveled. Um, downtown, uh, if I want to go out to eat down there, um, and, and time permits, which is probably fifty to seventy percent of the time, I ride my bike down there. Um, as I mentioned, I run in the city a lot. Uh, February last year, I ran four hundred and fifty-five miles in one, in one month. Um, that's a lot of running and I know how dangerous it is and I, I, I don't feel safe on all the streets uh, on my bike. I would like to do what we saw on Venice, uh, that's just been done and, and it was done in Marvis on Venice and, and move the parking lane on the outside of the bike lane wherever possible. Uh, having that protected space is huge. I do know, people have brought up concerns with that as far as ADA accessibility, if someone's getting out of their car, how do they get up onto the curb? So I think we should be thoughtful in that and, and provide mid-block ramps, um, if we, you know, if we do that
seconds.
within the city. Um, but I'm a big fan of having that bike lane between the curb and the parking lane.
Thank you. Ken Kenji is next.
Uh, thank you. Um. I'm an inveterate pedestrian. I like walking to the grocery store and bank. So, um, al- also I walk two miles daily, uh, for health reasons and, uh, just to enjoy the scenery because we do have beautiful um, tree canopies in town and that's something that even Supervisor Mitchell, um, commented on when she came to visit the city and when she was, uh, campaigning, uh, for her, uh, um, post, uh, two years ago. And, uh, I, I don't drive to the city of LA anymore when I have business. Um, I just drive and, and park my car at the, um, uh, subway station at the corner of Las Yenega and Jefferson and take the subway, uh, all the way to downtown and to parts beyond because you can get a lot of reading done, uh, on the subway and then, uh, enjoy, um, not having to negotiate yourself through, um, Los Angeles traffic. So it's a double benefit. When do I ride the bicycle? Uh, when I, uh, ride on the Biona Creek, that's the only time I, I seem to enjoy, um, biking because it's a totally dedicated bike lane and you run a, you want to ride where it's safe. So I'd like to see more, uh, dedicated bike lanes around town away from busy traffic. Um, uh, so that at least you could go to the, uh, co-op biking and so forth. So, um, thank you for the opportunity to expound on those.
Thank you. Finally, Alex Fish.
Thank you. Um, I, I ride a Mazi fixed gear for, um, anything where I need to worry about where my bike is locked up. I ride a Turn GSD for anything that I don't want to be too sweaty when I get there. Um, so all those are functional trips. Um, I walk primarily to either go to local, to either, uh, Amazon, the, um, Whole Foods or to co-op or other, other local businesses or with the family downtown. Uh, or primarily actually to get to the E-line. I regularly ride the E-line to get downtown for work or for, you know, just to meet with friends. Um, I ride the bus whenever I can, whenever it's convenient and it quite often is. I think our bus network is pretty underrated. Um, did I miss anything? And I drive, um, one day per week, uh, to drop off and pick up the kids. We've recently started riding much more, um, to school because they're old enough that I think they'll be safe and trust them and uh, feel like we have good communication so that they don't get squished. Um, and I also drive if I have to for work or to see my parents and that's really about it. Um, if I need, if it's a, a destination where I can, I often take a Greyhound bus for, for work travel. And that, I think, rounds out, and for fun, I swim, I body surf and I sometimes do some good old-fashioned lycra cladon road cycling and a fair bit of running.
Thank you. So finally, uh, we're gonna give candidates the opportunity to, to say more ad lib. Um, we're gonna give two minutes per candidate, but if you can, if you could wrap in less than that, that, please, I encourage that so that we can finish this uh, at eight-thirty as scheduled. Is there anything else that you didn't get a chance to say that you would like to share now? First, Freddie Puzo.
Yeah, well, thank you so much for your time and attention tonight. Um, I didn't talk about my job. I'm, uh, uh, I do, I'm the Director of Community Relations at Loyola Marymount University. So I work with a diverse set of stakeholders, including the university neighbors, small businesses, um, uh, Neighborhood Council, um, and local government, um, to, you know, come to a common agreement and move that through the bureaucracy of, uh, Los Angeles. So in other words, public engagement is what I do, um, for a living. Um, I'm so proud to be endorsed by Streets For All, Sierra Club, Friends of the Earth Action, um, Los Angeles League of Conservation Voters, the Center for Biological Diversity. These are all mobility and, uh, sustainability environmental groups. Um, really on the front lines, um, advocating for the, all the issues that we're fighting for. Um, and so it's an honor to be endorsed by all these organizations. Um, you know, bottom line, um, is what I want to create, uh, co-create with everyone in the city is a healthy city that has clean air, um, and water. Housing at all economic levels, mobility infrastructure that helps reduce traffic and decrease deaths and injuries. Um, public safety that works for everyone and systems of care that uphold the dignity of all people, um, in order for them to thrive and survive. Um, and I'm under no illusion that Culver City alone will do all this on its own, but it's my promise that we'll do our fair share of the work and thanks for your time and attention today.
Thank you. Dan O'Brien is next.
Yeah, um, before I get into my personal, uh, rap, something I didn't talk about and I, I, I don't know if anyone really touched on it. There's not enough bike parking locations throughout the city. Uh, it's, I can't tell you how many times I've ridden my bike somewhere and I, I end up locking it onto a fence or, or, or a piece of property that it isn't a bike rack. Uh, that's a major problem. Downtown's a big issue. Um, I know in front of the platform, it's, it's like two rings there. And part of the problem might be, I know, I'm not gonna say who it is because I don't want them to get in trouble with the city, but they were very frustrated. They wanted to just put a bike rack in front of their, uh, their business fifty thousand dollars later for two U-rings. You know, for, for the study, for, it's, it's absurd. You know, for something that probably costs in, in material and labor, a, a few grand. Um, it, it's, it's really ridiculous. That needs to be streamlined. Um, for myself, uh, you know, like I said, I've been here for twenty-two years. I've been involved in Culver City in every way possible. Um, people know me as someone who gets things done. I, I've got big vision, big ideas. I collaborate well. I always try to find common ground. Um, I treat people respectfully. Um, I don't try to other people ever. Um, I don't know if everyone can say that here. Um, I really want to bring the city together, um, and, and, and take in everyone's individual, and when I say individual, by neighborhood, uh, perspective on things because every place is different. Everyone has their own environmental issues where they live and we should take that into consideration and work. And, um, I want to work together with, uh, the community to bring the city forward. Thanks so much for having me.
Thank you. Ken Kenji is next.
Uh, thank you. Um. I, I think that, uh, we've brought a lot of, um, parameters to the fore that we need to address with the next, uh, council. Um, and, um, a- as, as an environmental advocate who has worked since two thousand nine to do a health study online um, in neighborhoods surrounding the Inglewood Oilfield, um, I really feel strongly that we can accomplish a lot by, uh, listening to, uh, grassroots voices in terms of listening to neighborhoods specifically and their unique needs in integrating, uh, our mobility infrastructure from every, um, corner of the city. For example, what do I mean by that? Well, um, I know that Culver Crest and Fox Hills neighborhoods being, um, annexed neighborhoods to the city of Culver City. Uh, we do not have, um, easy access to the closest subway station. Um, that is the one at Las Yenega and Jefferson. So, um, an electric shuttle that goes from Fox Hills and then to Culver Crest and then, uh, to the, um, subway station at, um, Jefferson and Las Yenega will be really helpful in cutting down on our carbon footprint and also alleviate a lot of the traffic, uh, that seems to be in a snag these days, running on Jefferson from west to east, trying to get to the subway station. So that would be something that I would, uh, work on, um, heavily. Um, if I were so lucky to be on the council and, um, I think we, uh, we, uh, we have a lot of creative talent, um, and, um, creative energy in town. I think if we could have little local festivals where we could just walk to and take our families and kids to, uh, I think we can open up a lot of businesses, um, to the public eye as well. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to expound on that.
Thank you. Alex Fish is next.
Thank you very much. Um, I've been, just I'm freshly back from the UCLA Arrowhead Symposium, which is, um, usually one of the preeminent, uh, transportation, um, conferences, um, at least in the West Coast. This year, the focus was housing because people, uh, you know, this, this is a symposium of academics, uh, nonprofits, um, industry, um, activists, it's just, you know, sort of leaders. And I was, um, this was about housing because people are increasingly seeing the intersection and the sameness of housing, mobility, climate, homelessness, public safety, racial justice. Um, and I was asked to present because, uh, on a panel about actually making this stuff happen. Um, and the reason I was invited to that after just four years is that we are making things happen. And the reason that it is hard, uh, to get this stuff done is that it does take commitment. You do have to make tough choices and you do have to offend people to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, to house the homeless, to provide everyone with safety in our public streets. So, I mean, I bring that up just because it was a outside indication of the things I've been talking about, but, um, but we are being noticed because we're actually pointing the way towards a California that addresses its biggest challenges, traffic, homelessness, housing affordability, all these things, racial justice. And, um, yeah, I just wanted to point out at the end here, you know, that there was a lot that I agreed with in this. We asked, we were asked to make differences, but you know, Dan talking about programming public space, I agreed with much more, but that was a really good one. That's a really great point. Devin talking about public restrooms. Yeah, we need more public restrooms. Amen, brother. Um, Ken Ken talking about the ADA problems of our built environment. Absolutely. We need to go back. We need to make sure that this city is, um, is, is retrofitted to universal design principles. Um, and finally Freddie, you know, pointing out that grants are tied to disadvantaged communities. That's a hundred percent right, which is why with this new round of grants and new priorities, we have to do everything. We have to get the pro, pro-housing designation. We have to take climate action if we're ever gonna get a grant again. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. And finally, Devin Jaeger.
Uh, I'll keep it brief. Um, I, I think you guys kind of get what I'm about. Uh, I'm definitely the youngest person here. I'm twenty-nine. Uh, I'm a small business owner. I started a recruiting company five or six years ago. It's done pretty well, taking the profits from that business. Um, I bought property. I have a little triplex, as I talked about on Tilden. So I'm right there between, between Sepulveda, Sepulveda, Bentley, Tilden, that's me, between Washington and Venice. So I'm right in the thick of where I imagine a lot of you folks live. Um, you know, the apartment area is kind of in that, in that area. We have the same concerns. We want safety. We want cleanliness. Um, you know, I, I think the big picture push for affordable housing is great, but I don't see the results. I mean, last I checked, you want a nice, you know, two, three bedroom in this, in Culver City, it's all new construction for four or five grand. I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't see how new construction is gonna get us to affordable housing. I just don't see it. Uh, what's gonna get us, there's folks like me, young entrepreneurial people being encouraged to come to the city and, you know, rehab older buildings, make them nicer, rent them out for, you know, somewhere in between, you know, what they used to be and brand new construction. That's what we need. We need more housing options for people in the middle. Um, like I said, small business owner. I go to law school also right now. I run a nonprofit in Uganda. I know you folks like climate stuff. I have a, I have a solar startup, um, you know, working on building utility skills, utility scale solar projects throughout, uh, East Africa. I think we all see eye to eye on so many things. We just need folks in City Hall that are gonna roll up their sleeves and get it done. Uh, one One more promise, if you guys vote for me, I will push the Culver City Police to designate an officer to specifically be a bike detective. I think, why, why not pay, able to pick up a phone, your bike gets stolen, call Officer Roger, who's in charge of all bike thefts in Culver City. I think we need more specialized policing like that. So you guys can get the customer service. The government works for you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, everybody. Thank you to the candidates for all showing up on, on frankly, quite short notice. Thank you to all the volunteers from Bike Culver City who helped pull this off, especially Seth Mason and Katrina Kaiser for what I think ran pretty smoothly. But most importantly, thank you to the community members who are tuning in live or will be watching this recorded at a later date. With that, let's, let's call it a night and we'll let you go. And I hope that this was helpful for our local democracy. Good night.
Thank you.